I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Board meeting for the Town of Newbury. This is the 4th of March, 2020. My name is Pete Perkos and I'd like to introduce you to our board members.
Mary Stone.
Woody Knight.
Leslie Matthews.
Larry Murphy.
Martha Taylor, Town Planner.
And participating remotely will be George Morse. George Morse will be participating remotely in tonight's public hearing by telephone due to personal illness in accordance with 940 CMR 29.10. All planning board votes will be by roll calls. Hello, George?
Good evening.
All right. So we have a pretty tight agenda tonight. We have a number of appearances and then we have two public hearings. So we're going to try to get through our appearances and then start our first public hearing at 6:45. So starting off our appearances will be Christopher York, Millennium Engineering of a submission of a definitive subdivision plan for Farm, U Lane, 68 Green Street, MAP R 35 Lot 21, owner applicant 68 Green Street Realty Trust, Eva Jackman, trustee.
Hello, Chris.
Good evening. My name is Chris York with Millennium Engineering. We were here about a month and a half ago. We presented the preliminary subdivision. Accepted and approved that. Now we are back here looking for acceptance of the definitive subdivision. I don't know how much detail you want me to get into tonight, but I can give a quick...
Go for it. Wonderful.
It's a three-lot subdivision proposing a 22-foot-wide gravel roadway coming in off of Green Street. About 498-foot-long cul-de-sac, at least three lots. Show the lot layout plan. So we've got Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3. Minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. The minimum lot we have is 58,000 plus for Lot 3. Lots 1 and 2 are well over 200,000 square feet. And the grading plan just goes into a little more detail. We're proposing some country drainage along the edge of the road to tie in into a proposed constructed wetland outback. This is all sized to match pre and post runoff rates. We show some gravel driveways. Those were based off of fire department comments back during the preliminary process. And we show proposed leach fields. Test pits and perks were done a while ago for those, so we got one for each lot. There it is. And that's a pretty quick overview. I can go into more detail with any questions you may have.
So tonight is basically a submission, right?
Yes. I have a package here for Martha.
Okay. Any general questions for anybody on the submission?
None at this point.
Nope.
Okay. Cool. Very good.
Thank you.
You can pass your information over to Martha. Martha, do you have any questions or concerns?
Not at the moment, so the board will just need to vote to accept it and then set a public hearing date.
Do you have any suggestions on the public hearing date?
Well, I have for your use.
Oh, a calendar for everyone.
Calendar. That includes March and April, so if you could pass those down. So it's got our known public hearings on it right now. So this one, because the preliminary subdivision was previously submitted and approved, the board has 90 days from submission to take action.
Yes, sorry. I took your paper.
But the public hearing requires two notifications in the paper. So I would say that the earliest date we could reasonably be looking at would be the April 1st meeting at the moment. Doesn't have anything scheduled. That will change.
So the reason Martha has done this, because as you can tell from our appearances and our other things that are coming on our plate, our next couple of months are going to be busy, so we're just going to kind of be proactive in our planning. So with that said, what time would work for you, Martha?
Doesn't really matter.
Okay. Would you like to shoot for a 7:15?
That would be fine.
Okay.
I'll move that we accept the application and set the public hearing for 7:15 PM at our April 1st, 2020 meeting.
Second.
And my discussion? All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, thank you, George and Larry. You know, I am glad that I have two attorneys. So we're going to do a...
Two attorneys.
Yes, we're going to do a roll call vote. So we're going to start with you, George.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Mary?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Peter, yes. All righty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you on the 1st.
All righty. I'd love that, but if you will support.
Keep you honest.
Thank you. Okay. Next, under appearances, we have an appearance by John Colontoni, subdivision of definitive submission of a definitive subdivision plan for Colontono Crossing, 108 Main Street, MAP U 11, Lot 1A, and off Main Street, MAP R 41, Lot 56, owner applicant Triple Q Inc.
Good evening. I'm John Colontoni from Triple Q Inc. We have had a couple of roundtable discussions with Martha and Doug over the last few months, and we'd like to submit to get a public hearing scheduled. We have everything that's needed. It's a five-house subdivision at 108 Main Street. The land we purchased at auction through the town. The town had already done some perking and had combined the two lots. We've already done all the test pits, soil testing, and all the test pits perk-wise for septic systems. Doug and Martha and all the staff has just been phenomenal to work with, so we're excited. It's our first project in Byfield. We've done other projects on the North Shore. And be open to any questions. I didn't bring any display because we're used to only being able to display for a public hearing. A lot of boards are kind of secretive about that until the public hearing, so this is the first of a board that we're coming to where we submitted at a meeting to schedule a public hearing. But I'd be glad to open up anything that you'd like to.
Okay. Martha?
Just one other thing, and it's my mistake. I didn't actually have it on here. They're also submitting a common driveway special permit application.
Yes.
Because they are looking to do a common driveway for two of the lots. So the plan that you'll see shows the yield plan with the five lots and five separate accesses, but due to the natural resources on the site, they are requesting permission. So it's actually two applications, so the public hearings will run concurrent essentially.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't think so. I guess I'll just stay.
Right.
Now, this has not been the subject of the preliminary plan.
This has not, so the board has 135 days within which to take action unless it's extended by agreement of both the applicant and the board. But the posting requirements for both the special permit application and the subdivision are the same. So we'd be looking at a month out anyway.
Are you going to do April 15?
Could.
I know there was some talk about continuing the golf center to the 15.
That might be after the 11, the 15.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, that works. Actually, that's another problem.
Yep.
Do we have to vote to accept the special permit application as well?
I would say yes, if we want to get that moving.
Yeah.
But we could set, you know, both hearings for the same time.
All right. Yeah. 7:15?
On April 15. So accepting both applications.
And will we accept both applications and set the public hearing dates concurrently for 7:15 PM on April 15?
Second?
Second.
All righty. Okay, I will do a roll call vote. George, how do you vote on this?
Yes.
All righty.
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Peter, yes. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay. So we will set that for 7:15 on the 15th.
7:15.
That would be for both applications, and that is 108. Great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All righty.
Thank you. One question. Where are you with the NRAD for the Concom?
So NRAD is all set with conservation yet, and we've already filed the six NOIs, one for the roadway and then for the five separate lots.
Okay.
So, all right.
All right. Wonderful. Martha, do you want that right over there again?
Yep, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have three minutes before we're going to start our public hearing. Maggie? Do you want to try to do it?
Lon has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
How late about this? I'm not sure.
Quick question. Will we be able to get copies of this being submitted here? Public?
Yeah, I can... Yes, and definitely the abutters will be notified, and copies will be available in Town Hall for review, and I will try to get PDFs. I will get PDFs from the applicant and send those to anybody who's interested.
Okay. I'll make sure we get on the list.
Okay. And Lon, if you could send me an email reminding me, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Hello. I'm Maggie Brown from the County Realty Association. I don't know if you want the plans. I have them in the package there, but we are here proposing a... We're submitting a A and R plan for a lot subdivision at 254 Middle Road. This is north of the Parker River from the Governor's Academy, and as it exists, is it an 18-acre parcel made up of the red and the yellow? And the plan is to divide it into one 14-acre parcel and one four-acre parcel. The four-acre parcel will retain the house lot, and the 14-acre parcel will be sold by the Paul Kavanaugh Trust to the Department of Fish and Game. And I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
Martha, do we have any questions?
I've reviewed it. I spoke with Vanessa at Essex County Green Belt. I think it's been... I think it's addressed the questions I had. Anne Gagnon from Fish and Game is here. If you have any questions for her, she's right there.
Okay. Great. Anne, do you want to come on up and answer any questions or say anything?
I'll figure it out. Don't mind. If you have any questions, then...
Does everyone on the board, is everyone familiar with what's going on with this?
No.
Okay. Come on up. So this is a parcel that has been worked on for some time. Part of this will be going into fish and wildlife and part will be going to Greenbelt. So I'm just going to have you just talk very briefly, and I'm just going to let folks know that we're going to do our public hearing. We're just going to delay it for a couple of minutes just so we can finish this discussion. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I've been working with Vanessa over at Essex County Green Belt and Maggie to protect as much as we can of this parcel that was previously owned by the Kavanaugh family. And so they own this historic house, and so we are hoping to acquire the parcel in red that would be split off. It's primarily the salt marsh along Parker River, and there is a little piece of upland in the back here. And then the house would be sold to another party, and they would retain four acres, which is basically this paddock area field. So that's about it.
They would retain a right-of-way to the river, and they'd also have the previous rights maintained with that. So this is an opportunity to maintain some of the architecture of the community as it is in a protected state. So any questions by anyone?
No.
That being the case, we're going to need to approve this.
Motion to endorse.
Right.
Motion.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
I love it. We're going to do a roll call on the motion, George. Are you all set?
Yes.
Okay. How do you vote?
Yes.
All righty. Mary?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Peter, yes. Okay. Wonderful. Here we go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate the efforts.
Would we leave the Mylar?
Yes.
And then get it signed and pick it up later? Or whatever?
Do we sign it right now?
Yeah, we could sign, have the Mylar signed now, so you can take it with you, and then we'll sign the rest of it afterwards.
Okay.
Top right corner. There's a box in the bottom. There we go.
Are you men or ready? Are you men or ready? That would have been great. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
So, Leslie? So we are going to continue our public hearing. Special permit modification application, Borrego Solar Inc. Request to modify condition number six, the special permit granted for 2.785 megawatt solar energy generating facility. The property located at 136 Main Street, MAP 41R, Lot 42A, 138 Main Street, MAP R 41, Lot 42B, 140 Main Street, MAP 41R, Lot 42, and off I-95, MAP R 42, Lot 13, owned as Ruth Yousayer, 136 and 140 Main Street, off I-95, and Kevie and Kelly Yousayer, Karen Yousayer trustees, 138 Main Street, applicant Borrego Solar Systems Inc. Leslie, it's up to you now.
Okay. Um, do I have the copy?
Yeah, actually, you don't need to read. The hearing's open, so you don't need to read it again.
Oh, beautiful. I was going to have her do that.
I know you were. I'm getting her off the hook here.
Okay. I'm going to have to...
High five.
All right. So, Leslie? So we are going to continue our public hearing. Special permit modification application, Borrego Solar Inc. Request to modify condition number six, the special permit granted for 2.785 megawatt solar energy generating facility. The property located at 136 Main Street, MAP 41R, Lot 42A, 138 Main Street, MAP R 41, Lot 42B, 140 Main Street, MAP 41R, Lot 42, and off I-95, MAP R 42, Lot 13, owned as Ruth Yousayer, 136 and 140 Main Street, off I-95, and Kevie and Kelly Yousayer, Karen Yousayer trustees, 138 Main Street, applicant Borrego Solar Systems Inc. Leslie, it's up to you now.
Okay. Um, do I have the copy?
Yeah, actually, you don't need to read. The hearing's open, so you don't need to read it again.
Oh, beautiful. I was going to have her do that.
I know you were. I'm getting her off the hook here.
Okay. I'm going to have to...
High five.
All right. So do we have anything from the applicant?
I don't have anything. I think we lost the last time that you guys were going to go visit the site, our existing site that's at Fort Middle Road. And I know some of you did that Saturday. I wasn't able to attend, but I hope you saw it and saw what you needed to see. No one got back to me that they needed to go inside, so I don't know if you have any questions for me regarding that walk.
Okay, so we did do a site walk, and that was on the... What was the date?
It was February 22nd.
22nd.
Starting at 1:00 PM.
Right.
There are photos in your packets.
And so everyone has an opportunity to look at those and to see what they visually looked like. I think Leslie was there. I think Woody was there. Larry was there.
He was.
Mary, I think you got copies of the photos.
I was not there.
And I can...
I got a copy here.
I did go over. I've seen it.
Totally have.
Yes. Yes, yes.
And George.
Thank you.
George has mullered in. He missed the first session of the public hearing, but he has mullered in, so he is participating tonight.
Would you like me to read this?
You could just say that he has certified that he's watched the video.
And he has. He has certified that he's watched the video, and it is documented. Correct, George?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I do not.
Does anybody have any comments from the site walk that we did?
The only comment that I would have to make is that after the site walk, the white doesn't appear to be white.
No, it's gray. It's gray. You were right.
And that was based upon?
We walked... We looked at it from both sides and the way that the degrees are and the black on one side and the shadowing on the other side. And it was a beautiful day. It was a really good sunny day, so you could really get a good idea of how it worked.
Larry, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I agree 100%. You know, we looked at it. It all looked gray to me. In fact, much more... I think this was taken with... These photos were taken with a cell phone, and I don't know what sort of filter was on there, but it seems to exaggerate the blue. I remember it as a much more monochrome gray throughout, you know? Quite a battleship gray, but, you know, lighter gray, so...
Yeah, these printed out a little darker than they actually were on my phone, so I'm not sure if it was the printer or what it was.
The imagery by the town board is appropriate colors.
Right. Yeah.
But the point is... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, I was just going to say, you know, the condition specifies in particular the gray to be used and white not to be used, but it's gray to the eye, you know? So I didn't... I don't see any issue.
Okay. Woody, you also had an opportunity to take a look at that. Do you have anything you want to?
No, I can't say that. I do. I think it's all been said. It does look gray in the shadow. No, and like Leslie said, it was a nice sunny day, so not getting any glare or anything like that.
Yep. George, did you have an opportunity to take a look at those visual images?
I did not.
Okay.
The photos I did.
Okay, okay. The photos you did. And any comments on the photos?
No, it looks gray to me.
Okay. Looks gray to you. And Mary, you're on the same...
Well, I think it's important to note that you have not been able to get gray. You can only get white, but the white looks gray. So we're all good, right?
I'm good.
That's my opinion.
Okay, cool. I will open this up to any public comment or questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That being the case, we haven't drawn anything up yet, Martha, have we?
No, because there was no sense of the board last time without having actually seen these in the field.
So I think we have kind of a sense of the board, just from the conversation that we've had here. So I think what might be a good idea is to try and draw something up, and what we could do is we could basically close our hearing at this time. We won't vote on this until we have our documents in place, and so I would say we bring that back. Do you think our next meeting, or would you like to go two weeks with that, Martha?
Well, if we close the hearing, we have to put you under a time clock, doesn't it? Put us under time clock.
It only... The board has... Once the hearing is closed, the board has 90 days within which to make a decision. Once the decision is made, then it has to be filed with the clerk in 14 days.
Okay.
So...
So once the vote is taken, we've got 14 days.
Once the vote is taken. So, you know, with a sense of the board, I could draft it, but once the hearing is closed, there's no further comment or testimony.
So my question is procedural. We can't vote right now?
Well, what we would do... We don't have our decision drafted yet.
Okay.
So what happened is Martha would draft our decision. We can close the hearing at this point in time, which means there'd be no more public comment.
Right.
This would be it. She would bring back the draft document. We would then review that and then vote on that at that point in time.
Okay.
The conditions. Okay?
Okay.
Beautiful.
Got it.
So I would entertain a motion to close our public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing for the Borrego project?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I'm going to do a roll call, George?
Yes.
Okay. Leslie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Peter, yes. Very good. All right, Martha?
Okay. And then a motion to direct me to draft a decision?
Yeah, I so moved.
Yes.
All right. We have a second motion, George. Did you hear that? This is to draft the decision?
Yes, I did.
All righty. How would you vote on drafting the decision?
Yes.
Wonderful. Leslie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
And Peter says yes. I know Woody's with us in spirit. All right. Are you happy? Very good. Okay. We're not at 7:15, so we can actually continue with some more of our appearances on our agenda. Next, we would have John O'Connell.
Can I just ask a question?
You can.
When would you vote on that decision?
So the goal... The goal is to do that at the next meeting, right? So that would be March 15.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So get it drafted.
Yep. That works.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
All right. John O'Connell?
Now, Pete, this is Julie O'Brien. She's the new John O'Connell.
All right.
I'm just here to cases, questions.
You won't be offended if I tell you that she's...
I will not be insulted.
That she's better looking? All right.
I'm just here to cases, questions.
You won't be offended if I tell you that she's?
I will not be insulted.
That she's better looking? All right, okay. This will be Julie O'Brien, speaking to us on the stormwater management team. A request to amend our site plan review regulations for compliance with MS-4 permit. Come on up.
Yes. Part of the, hi, I'm Julie O'Brien.
Hi, Julie O'Brien.
I work for the DPW now, and I'm also working with the stormwater management. I've been in two months with the town, so I'm new. So this is my first appearance. Thank you. So part of the MS-4 permit, the second year requirement, is to add record drawings to the site plan regulations. So John and I wrote up a paragraph and added it in, and we had submitted it to Martha for her review. So that's why I'm here today.
And that's, that language is in your packet. It's the record drawing requirements are at the very end.
Yes.
So this is a regulation change and requires a public hearing, but it's not something that requires town meeting approval. And as a second year requirement, it needs to be done by June 30th.
2/30, correct.
This year.
Yes.
Okay. That being said. Would you like to direct this, Martha?
Well. Being that we just need to hold the public hearing and then get it done, I mean, it could probably go into May if we were now looking at. Or it could be April 15th, but we know that we've got a couple of other things.
Is there anything controversial about it? It strikes me probably be pretty quick.
It should be pretty quick.
Is it otherwise, other than getting it done by the end of June, is it otherwise time sensitive?
No, just the end of June as part of this year too. So by the end of the fiscal year, it needs to just be completed. So when we fill out our report, we can say it's completed.
Done.
Yeah.
So if we put it into the 15th, then if there was any issues, that gives us?
Time to continue with.
Right. Okay.
What? I don't know what time. I'm deferring to our town planner. What time do you want it on, Martha? 7:45? Or do you want to go into me?
You know, it's really up to you guys.
Excuse me. Is it John?
Yes.
John's having a little trouble hearing us, so maybe we could speak up.
That's okay, I always have trouble hearing.
I know, but we could speak up.
Even when I was on the board, I couldn't hear you.
We can hear you fine though.
Okay.
I'm just here as a resource in case you beat up Julie.
Okay. All right.
So far, so good.
We'll be careful of that.
They'll be gentle.
Okay, John.
I would ask one question though, Peter. There's several new members on the board, relatively new. Does everybody on the board know what the MS-4 program is?
No.
Because if you don't, it would be a real good idea to know.
Would you like to say a little bit about it, George?
I'll be happy to give you.
Absolutely, yeah. You know more about it than I do.
Back in the day, when I was young and good-looking. There were, no, back in the 70s, oh, late 60s, the Cuyahoga River caught fire in Cleveland. And everybody said, you know, this ain't right. We shouldn't have rivers catching fire. All of a sudden, people started getting really serious about water pollution. And the EPA was founded by Republican Congress, believe it or not. And the Clean Water Act was passed. And all of a sudden, there was a great deal of grant money available to build sewage treatment plants. You couldn't prove about a situation on the Meramec River where some horrible things have happened, but that's an anomaly. In general, that program was extremely successful. And now stormwater runoff from the land that picks up pollutants on its way out is the, probably providing something in the order of 70% of water pollution. So the EPA has been pushing towns that have enough people in them to matter. And cities, obviously. They started out with the largest cities, then they got down to towns like Newbury. And they've, every five years, the theory is they would, they would give us something to do and then make it several times worse in the next five years. Okay? The principles are sound. Not everything that they're telling us to do makes a great deal of sense. But in principle, it's a very good program. It's something that we should have and we should be doing. So. Some towns have regulations that are counterproductive. Insisting on roads that are way bigger than are needed, that provide far more runoff than we should have. And this is the kind of thing that we're urged to clean up. The, your subdivision rules and regulations make all the sense of the world. I've got nothing to complain about, about them. You obviously have to be safe. You want to have two fire trucks to be able to pass each other without colliding. In the middle of a fire, that's not a good thing. So. Other issues are water testing, which we've got a program for. James Zaret's team down at the Highway Barn have been trained on this, and we have a program to keep them going. They're going to be testing something in the order of 100 outfalls, the ones that are in the areas that are most likely to be spewing out pollutants. We have plans that we have to write. About half of them, two-thirds of them have been written. There's a couple more that will be written, other in the process of being written now. And there's odds and ends of little stuff from here on in. But this will be the last time I think that we'll have to bother you. Did I miss anything, Julie?
Oh, you see, guys.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
So, let's look for a date.
So we could do April 15th.
Okay.
After the 108 Main Street.
Okay.
Thing. So, you know, look, as we get into May, we have town election coming up and things like that. So, so do you want to say April 15th?
Let's go for that.
Okay.
7:45? I moved that we set the public hearing for April 15th. I got our April 15th meeting for 7:45 PM.
Second.
All righty. A motion has been made and seconded. George, have you heard the motion?
Yes.
All righty. And how would you like to vote on this motion?
In favor, yes.
Wonderful. Leslie?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And Peter, yes. Any further discussion? Okay, then. There we have it. And we're good.
Peter, excuse me, I'm going to be stepping out of the meeting at this point.
Wonderful, George, thank you very much for joining us. I appreciate it.
Thanks, George. Thanks, George.
You too. Bye-bye.
Bye, George.
Something I failed to mention, the fine for non-compliance is 20 grand a day. I just thought I'd throw that out.
Thank you. Thank you very much, John.
Which means it's not exactly optional.
Yeah. Something we need to do.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
All righty. Continuing along with our appearances. Steven Sawyer, Design Consultants, Inc., submission of a preliminary subdivision plan for 277 High Road, map R11 Lot 70, owner, applicant, DePero LLC.
So he both emailed and called me today to say that they're not submitting tonight. They will plan to submit on March 18th.
Okay. Wonderful. And let's see how we're doing on time. Wonderful. So we're not quite at 7:15, so we can move into new business. I see on our first is 6 Marsh Middle Lane, notice I intend to sell land in Chapter 61B. Martha? What do we want to talk about this?
Well, I think you all have in your packets the information that Ellen sent out from the selectman's office, which includes a request from the selectman to have feedback from all the boards and committees by next Monday, March 9th. And the question really is, and this is a parcel, which was part of the Marsh Meadows subdivision, which was approved a while back. And it was one of several house lots that were identified or designated as part of the approval process. And there is a plan in your packet which shows that the lot is Lot 3. It's highlighted. So the question really is whether the board sees any potential for municipal use for this parcel or any other value as conservation land or other potential uses that would indicate that the town should either acquire this parcel itself or assign its right of first refusal to a nonprofit land conservation group.
Thank you, Martha. So the first page of the sheet demonstrates the lots 5, 6, 1, 2, 3, and 4. And so we're looking at Lot 3, which is basically in the center of lots that have been created as homesteads. Behind Lot 4 is an open space which was designed as part of this process, which is almost 86 acres. So there's already a significant amount of open space that was committed to this situation. So the question is whether we feel there's any use of Lot 3 to the community, to the town, or whether we feel that this should be continued along the process that's been requested for. So I will ask for input from our board. Or any questions you might have.
What's the cost?
The cost?
Right.
There's a PNS.
Yeah, the PNS is for $80,000. And so if the town were to decide to acquire it, it would need to match this price.
Okay.
So the PNS is included in your packet?
Okay, got it.
So does it abut any other municipal land or conservation land?
No, it abuts, well, it abuts the open space that was designated as part of the Marsh Meadows. So that was subdivision, so that was the 86 acres that.
And how was that held?
And so there is a conservation restriction on that. And that does abut Martin Burns. But this.
Is that open to the public?
Martin Burns.
Accessible to the public?
This open space actually, unlike most of the others, is not open to the public.
Was this originally part of the town forest?
No.
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 For municipal use, what would be the confines to be able to go in? What, if we, if it were decided that it could be used as a municipal piece of property?
Yeah, it's whether we feel the town might have any value in the property. So what could we potentially, you know, consider it being utilizable?
So like?
What? It's a private road.
So on this plan here, Martha, so this is the lot in question, right?
Yes.
But that's being?
So that is going to be this lot here?
Right. What happens to the road? That just stays as access?
Yeah, that's actually a common driveway.
Common driveway.
Right.
Oh, I see. So they're probably gonna.
So the common driveway will remain.
Remains the common driveway. I see.
With frontage?
So basically this.
Just creates the frontage for the.
Going to create a buildable lot back here.
Correct.
So it is a buildable lot because its frontage is along here on the circle, and then this common driveway comes back.
Okay. I mean, the only question really for us is whether or not it has any municipal use. And frankly, I can't identify anything.
Yeah, I wouldn't know what, where to even begin with that, because I don't see any use for it.
Leslie?
Can't think of anything that would be appropriate as far as municipal use would be, considering there's abutters right there.
I have the same opinion. I think it is a house lot and appears to be designed as such, and it's surrounded by such. So that's probably what, that's best usage is. What action would you like from us, Martha?
Well, I think.
Like a recommendation to the?
Yeah, it's a recommendation from the board to the selectmen. So if you want to vote on a recommendation, and then I can draft a letter similar to the ones that have been drafted before.
So we can do that tonight, right now? I mean, we can.
We can direct Martha to.
Vote on it.
We can direct Martha to draft the recommendation.
Good, okay.
And since George is no longer here, it doesn't need to be a roll call vote.
Okay.
Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion that we allow Martha to draft recommendation for this lot.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
And that's a, that would be a recommendation that it has no municipal use as far as the board can identify.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And I think we are just about ready to start our continuation of our public hearing.
I have 7:13.
All right. Then we will continue onward. For our two minutes, I'm going to start the citizen's petition, or do you want?
No.
Okay. Do you want to do anything on town planners report?
Good, if you want.
Well, we have two minutes. It's up to you.
So on the town planners report. Actually, why don't we do the 40B? That'll just be a very quick.
Excellent. Okay.
So the 40B application, comprehensive permit application, was submitted to the zoning board of appeals. And they have set a public hearing date of March 19th to open the public hearing. And there is a, an email from Susan Neis there, the ZBA's administrator, in your packets. They are requesting comments from various boards and committees by March 23rd. So the information, I have one hard copy in my office. The information is also online on the ZBA's website under, I believe it's under Cricket Lane. And there's also background information from the previous application for this site, which was by Field Estates. This is basically a very similar layout, 24 units with six affordable on a cul-de-sac off of the end of Pearson Drive. And the planning board had previously written a very detailed letter to Mass Housing. And a lot of those points are actually addressed in Mass Housing's project eligibility letter, which was issued to the applicant. So I think this is really not the night for discussion, but it should be discussed at the next planning board meeting on the 18th so that the board can make its recommendations to the ZBA. So anybody who wants to come into the office and look at the hard copies, welcome to, or else look at it online. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions at this time? Wonderful. Beautiful. Well, that was perfectly timed. It is 7:15, and it is time to continue our public hearing. So I'm going to ask Damon to come up. Grab a chair?
I don't think it'll take very long.
Okay. So we are going to continue our public hearing, which is a modification to a previously approved site plan, Newbury Golf Center, 131, 133, 151 Scotland Road.
Yeah, well, this is just.
Yes, and.
So it's not actually being opened?
It is not being opened, but this is a request to the planning board and the selectmen from Eric Sorensen, a request for the public hearing for the Newbury Golf Center scheduled for March 4th, 2020 be continued until April 14th or 15th of 2020, submitted by Eric Sorensen of Newbury Golf Center.
All right. As the representative from the selectmen, we are going to continue the public hearing till April 14th at 7:15.
And that's all I need to say, right, Martha? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Damon. So we need a motion to do the same.
I would move that we also continue the planning board public hearing until, for a joint meeting with the selectmen on April 14th at 7:15.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Damon.
See you guys.
See you as well.
Bye, Damon.
See you later.
All right. So continuing our new business, we have a citizen's petition for insertion of zoning amendments articles and warrant for the April 28th, 2020 annual town meeting submitted to the planning board by the board of selectmen for a public hearing to vote to set public hearing date. This is an amendment to change the dimensions of Parker River Residential Use District in Article 4 Dimensional Regulations by adding a provision, Chapter 97, that's 6B, to set the maximum finished area in the Parker River Residential District at 2,500 square foot. In Article 2 Use of District by deleting the Chapter 97, 2B Written Description of Use Direct Districts, Parker River Residential, in its entirety and replacing it with a new written description. In an Article 3 Use of Districts by inserting new language, Written Description of Use of Districts of Parker River Residential. Martha, do you want to talk about this at all?
So this was, the copies of the petitions are in your packets here for the annual town meeting. They needed signatures of 10 presidents, which they received more than that. They have all been certified. So these were submitted to the selectmen because any zoning amendments actually need to be submitted to the planning board for public hearing. The selectmen referred these to the planning board at their meeting last week for public hearing. And as Pete said, basically, there are three petitions here, two of which really address the extent of the Parker River Residential District. And for those of you who don't know what that is, it's a district that basically goes from the Parker River and includes riverfront and along a portion of Cottage Road. And it was put in place back in the late 90s when Mary Barton, who owned a lot of the land and was leasing it to the homeowners there, agreed to sell the property to the people who had their houses. So the people owned their houses, but they were leasing the land. And they went and kind of staked out what they thought were their property corners. And the zoning that was put in place at that time essentially allowed them grandfathered status for their parcels, as long as they, I think, single-family residences is the only use they're allowed thereby right. So as long as they stayed single-family, then they were essentially grandfathered, because most of them are non-conforming. They're much smaller than what our zoning allows. So the citizen's petitions are intended to increase the area of the Parker River Residential District to include all of Cottage Road and then to put some, you know, a cap on the area of, finished area of any structure that would be, any new structure that would be built down there. So the board needs to set a public hearing date for these. And they will be on the warrant, because they're citizen's petitions, they are on the warrant already. And the board will need to, if the hearing is closed, then make a recommendation to town meeting regarding these petitions. I had invited Michelle, who spearheaded these, to come tonight to see if she wanted to say anything, but I will invite her to the public hearing as well so that she can give an explanation of kind of what and why.
Yeah, we certainly want to know what issues they're trying to address at a minimum. But you mentioned putting a cap on the size of the dwellings. I think that can be an issue to try to regulate that under zoning. Has town council weighed in on that at all?
She has, and, you know, basically, she said the same thing, that it could be an issue and it might not be accepted by the AG's office. I didn't include that in your packets tonight. I figured that could come at the public hearing, since we need to hold that anyway. But that is her opinion.
And I really haven't had a chance to study this, Martha, but are they taking two different approaches to this? One by just designating the lots and another by, in other words, are these complementary articles or are they alternative articles?
That's one of the things I wanted to find out, because it looks like they're alternative articles for the extent of the district. One is to identify all the parcels that would go in the district, and the other is to basically amend the written description that exists there now to add. amend the written description that exists there now to add some additional boundaries. So, it seems like two different approaches, but I haven't had any discussions with Michelle about what the intent is of submitting these two alternative languages for the district.
What's your thought process, Larry?
Well, I think we have no choice but to set a hearing date. Right now, with all the hearings coming up and with town meeting coming up, I wonder if this might be the subject of a special meeting. Because I know how much you'd like to stay here at night, Martha.
I mean, I had two, kind of two thoughts on that, just, you know, just like the other hearings, it will have to be noticed twice, so we could potentially, and we, the earliest that the board could do it, if we were to do a special hearing would be on March twenty-fifth, but I would have to get the language to the paper tomorrow for publication on March tenth.
I mean, if we do this in April, does that give us time to make our report?
If we were to do it April first, and it can happen anytime before town meeting, so, and it can be, if the public hearing is less than twenty-one days before town meeting, the report needs to be made, and I think it can be either written or oral.
Martha, what's the day of the town meeting?
April twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
I know that Tracy, the selectmen are going to be voting on the warrant on the thirty-first of March, again, because these are citizens petitions, they're automatically on it. The finance committee, there's usually then also the finance committee book that gets put together with the recommendations of all the boards and committees. If the hearing is still open, or the board hasn't made the recommendation, then it would just be made verbally at town meeting, I guess, unless you know of any other way that that could be done.
No, no, no. You know, it's a lot of work for you to put these things together, Martha, I know that. We've got a lot of public hearings coming up, so I kind of would be inclined to defer to our town planner on the date.
I guess, and quite honestly, it would be a push for me to get the public hearing notice language together to get it to the paper tomorrow for publication on Tuesday.
Take that off the table.
So...
Is it April first, does that...
So, I think April first, you know, the board, if you were open to that, could set the hearing early, again, at six forty-five, since we've got the Green Street at seven fifteen, or do it after Green Street.
I'm good either way.
Would folks be comfortable with the six forty-five?
Sure.
Does that work for you?
Fine with me.
Okay, so, we're tentatively looking right now for a motion for, meeting for six forty-five on the first of April?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Next, we're going to delve into regulatory revisions, develop a, just set a public hearing date, site plan review regulation revision, or we've done...
Yeah, we did that one.
Okay.
So, that was kind of, just kind of a reminder that we might, we might do these both, although, Larry, I don't know, would there be an issue advertising one public hearing for both the OSRD regulation changes and the site plan review ones that we just talked about, or should they be separate?
I would say, yeah, they probably should be separate.
Should be separate, yeah, okay.
Well...
They could be on the same night.
Yeah, yeah, but Jim, I honestly don't know the answer to that, but I got reactions to say, let's be cautious and do two.
Yeah, that was kind of my thought as well.
So, we have the current hearing for the fifteenth of April at seven forty-five. Do we want to tack this on at seven fifty?
I can imagine it's going to take one to five minutes.
Yeah.
You know, it's just correcting a typographical error in the regulation, or reference to incorrect section, rather.
Okay, so if we tack it on at seven fifty, we can just follow our seven forty-five, does that work with you, Martha?
Sure.
Okay, cool. Then I would entertain a motion to set a public hearing date for the OSRD regulatory revision. We're looking at the fifteenth of April at seven fifty.
And so move.
Second.
All right, in discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good.
So, four fifteen and seven fifty.
Got it.
Okay. Larry, did you want to make any, have any explanation?
No, no.
All right.
I think it's self-explanatory.
Yeah, I think so too.
How's the note-taking going?
Great.
All right, so, we're actually ahead of ourselves on our agenda.
Uh-oh.
It's okay.
Unbelievable.
Slow down.
We will do it. We're moving into our old business, which is scheduled at eight o'clock at seven thirty. So, zoning amendments for April twenty twenty annual town meeting, dimensional regulations and wireless communications. So, how are we lined up for our dimensional regulations?
So, I, so, the public hearing has been noticed. The first publication was on Tuesday, and we are essentially set for the public hearing on the eighteenth. And that was one thing I meant to include in your packets, I was just going to send you what's actually been published.
Okay.
So, I think I have gotten one comment already.
Okay.
On that, which will, I'll present at the public hearing.
Okay.
Actually, I might talk with town council about it.
So, the dimensions were sent to us by email?
Okay.
Yep, they're printed out.
So, and then the other thing that I included in your packets, I did get a clean copy from David Maxon of the wireless, and he picked up some, I think, some of the holes that were in the previous version. I haven't had a chance to go through this myself.
Okay.
But I guess my request would be, if you can, you all can go through it and then bring any comments, questions that you have with you to the public hearing.
Okay, so that would be our packet here from our consultant, which includes language as well as our map delineations. And of interest was that he indicated that Sprint might be merging into AT&amp;T. I guess that was indicated in his notes.
Okay. I haven't had a chance to read it either.
This came out, I think, last night, right?
Yes, it did.
Yeah, so, so we have a little bit of work to do on that component. And dimensional, we've talked about in our workshops.
We have.
Yep.
And I know that Selectman Walker has some concerns about the driveway one in particular, setting the width of the...
You know, there are.
He's concerned about setting the driveway width at twenty feet for driveways over two-hundred-and-fifty feet long, so he'll be coming to the public hearing to express his concerns.
And we took those directions, those were fire...
Well, it was from, it was Steve Sawyer, actually, had said that that was mass fire Emily did a little bit of research for me, just because I wanted to confirm that or not. There is an amendment, a Massachusetts amendment to the National Fire Protection Code, which exempts single and two-family houses from that, so...
And that's just a Massachusetts?
That's a Massachusetts amendment.
Okay, so I guess we do have to do a little bit of thinking about that.
Yeah, so, I think, you know, some discussion, it's certainly something that the fire chief has been requesting, and, you know, it is a public safety concern. Perhaps there are other ways that we can deal with it, but I think Jeff will bring his concerns up. You know, he's just concerned about it's being a burden for single-family or two-family homeowners of existing lots.
Of existing lots. Require modification of existing lots?
Not, no, no, but if somebody had a lot that hadn't been built on, that wanted, you know, wanted to put a house, and it was going to be, you know, three hundred feet back from the roadway.
Okay. All right, well, I think we're into our town planners report.
Well, I guess the question is, do we, maybe we should, since the public hearing is going to be our next meeting, might be good to talk a little bit about how we want to deal with that? Do we want to put together a PowerPoint presentation of some sort? How do we want to present the proposed amendments? In the past, I've often put together a PowerPoint presentation, just sort of, you know, with bullet points what the amendments are and a little bit of explanation of why, why we're doing them. If that would be helpful, I can do that again.
I think visuals are always helpful.
I think it's very helpful, actually, it's a lot of work for Martha.
It is, and so...
We're always going to begin with Martha's work.
If we, if we had just maybe like a total of three slides, something very simple?
Yeah.
Yeah, keep it simple.
Very simple.
I agree.
You agree?
I do.
And we're going to be doing some discussion on that when the time comes?
Somewhere, I'll be discussing it, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thoughts on...
I mean, I don't have anything to add that we haven't talked about in our workshop at this point.
I think that's it, yeah, yeah, just kind of that. And the, you know, the little schematic that you did, it was kind of the freehand, I think that was very helpful.
Yeah, I was, so I would include that and illustrative ones for business and light, industrial and commercial highway.
What I would suggest is that, rather than show an extreme version of what a lot could look like, that maybe show a more regularly shaped lot with the set backs, and then maybe some dotted lines to indicate where the, you know, if you wanted to pinch something in at the minimum, the access would be. So, example, that forty-foot access to the, to the buildable portion, if you know what I'm saying, Martha.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm afraid if we just show the public something that looks like a jigsaw puzzle piece, that they're going to be scratching their heads, wondering what it is we're fixing here.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Does it make sense in the PowerPoint configuration to do a lay-on, sort of...
Like a before and after?
Or, you know, you start with your one plan, and then you drop your second, and then you drop your third, they can be colored differently, bright colors, because we're going to be in an auditorium, right?
Right.
There's going to be lighting.
Well, it'll be in here first, so this will be our rehearsal, our trial run, basically, dress rehearsal.
Purple, you know, red.
Yeah.
Some colors that are going to be easily identifiable, not yellows or light blues. And that maybe, might be a way to, presentation one.
Right.
Presentation to case scenario two. Is that too cumbersome?
I'll have to look at it and see, because I, you know, it would probably be helpful if I could find a lot, kind of an illustrative lot, to then, you know, overlay those.
An already existing...
An already existing lot that I could then overlay, I mean, I could, I could just create one as well, but...
Wouldn't that, yeah, just...
It's a lot harder, though, to create one.
Yeah.
It's easier to use something that's already there as an example.
Right, if I can come up with one that would be...
You can't use my lot.
No, yours is off the table.
No, you don't have...
Mine's too small.
No, he's, okay, so we'll have to... We'll find a typical representation of what we're trying to achieve.
And try to keep it a neutral, a neutral one.
Yeah.
So, you're just looking for an existing lot, whether it's been built on or not, just so you can...
Yeah, just for illustrative purposes, so, you know, say this is a lot in town, and, you know, if somebody were to divide it, this is, you know, these dash lines represent whatever, if that's essentially kind of what you're getting at.
Yeah, I just, I don't want to get so into the weeds that people are going to lose what we're trying to accomplish here.
Right.
What we're trying to do is provide adequate, safe access in our, you know, to buildable lots.
Right.
You know, and we're trying to avoid these hockey sticker, pork chop shaped lots, you know, however you want to call them, where access is really problematic, because, you know, I mean, the reality is, is the larger, easily developable lots are becoming scarcer and scarcer developers, understandably, trying to squeeze every, every possible lot out of any given piece of property, and to the, to the point that safe access can be compromised, I think. And that's really all we're trying to say, but, you know...
Whereas, as you're saying that, even though it's difficult to visualize exactly what the words mean, I'm wondering if it actually complicates things by having the diagram.
Maybe we put up a plan that was submitted to us and explain the problems that we have with it, you know, and leave it at that.
Maybe. Well, something to think, I mean, we can still, for the public hearing, we can kind of use that as our, as our dry run, and then see what seems to make sense.
Right.
If anybody shows. But if somebody wants to work with me on, I mean...
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
You'll have to do the drawing, though, because I can't draw a straight line. I could never go into architecture school.
Well, hurry up.
It's never too late.
That's why I went to law school, I couldn't do math or draw a straight line.
There's always the internet.
All right, do we have anything further on our planners report?
So, on the planners report, a couple of things, one, we will, we will be getting probably on, on the eighteenth of March, a special permit application and site plan review application for a new AL Prime gas station, which is being proposed for twenty-three Central Street, which apparently is going to be in addition to the existing AL Prime gas station that exists on the western side of ninety-five, this will be right on the eastern side of the entry to Pearson Plaza. So, that is supposed to be submitted to me by next Wednesday, and so, we'll see.
I had it on pretty good authority they were going to close the existing one, no?
That's what I was originally told, but I asked the engineer who was submitting this if that was the plan, and he said, no, the intention is to keep that one open. So, we'll see, we'll see.
Doesn't make much sense economically.
Yeah.
So, I think when the time comes, those are questions to ask. Let's see, the other thing, there's going to be an environmental coordination meeting tomorrow for the Georgetown-Newbury section of the border to Boston Trail. I just found out about this today, but it will be including Fish and Wildlife and Mass DOT, and Doug and I are both going to go to look at the environmental issues along the Parker River.
So, this will be going from Georgetown to Byfield?
Yes.
That section?
That section, yeah. That's probably it for now.
And that will be basically more of a discovery to just see if it's a possibility?
No, I mean, this is, this is, well, they've already done the twenty-five percent drawings, but there are some environmental issues along the river, so this is really to get the relevant parties down there to take a look at those. LEC Environmental is going to be included, and so...
Okay.
Martha, you included in our packet the site plan review procedures with drawings and conclusions, was there any reason you wanted us to... Was there any reason you wanted us to have that information? It was on our email from, oh, no, the, the fourth? Did it come out today? No, it came out Monday. I just didn't know if there's anything we wanted to talk about that.
I'm sorry, I'm kind of drawn a little bit.
That's okay, so you submitted this guy.
Oh, that was, that was what Julie sent, so if you scroll to the very end of it,
Okay.
that's where they are requesting the amendment to add the record drawing requirements.
Got you. All right. Reports, Board of Selectmen.
Okay, Board of Selectmen last week, there were some, a few things at the beginning. The base of the meeting last week was on the Code of Ethics against violations against Selectmen Doyle and what their conclusions were on the different violations. So they came up. It was an intense meeting, I have to say.
Okay.
Yeah. So the board has decided to censure on some and send into the State Ethics Board on other violations.
So what happens when it goes to the State Ethics Board?
This, the State Ethics Board runs around the same kind of language as what we've adopted here in town. So they'll review it and they'll come back with what they feel the correct punishment or how they want to handle it going forward.
Leslie, there was a report in the local paper, was that, in your estimation, accurate? Did you see it? I mean, it talked, it said pretty much what you're saying, but I wondered if you had read it.
I wouldn't say it was inaccurate, but it would, it was all taken from point of view.
Okay, and whose, whose point of view?
Depending on who you were, who you are sitting in the audience that night. There were...
It's difficult, and I can, I can detect that from how you're choosing your words.
Yeah.
So I think with that said, any, any, any written article always has a perspective.
Oh, okay, I understand, I know, I was just curious, because I read that and then wasn't sure.
And, and I, and I read it as well, and so I think, you know, letting us know that it was...
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, that it was, you know, kind of a, probably, it's, I'm sure, a situation that no, no one likes to be part of.
But I do recommend, you know, for anything that happens in the future, that this is something that you go on and you review the video yourself to see how the procedure went and how it was handled.
Okay.
I, I was under the impression it was handled in a very orderly manner.
Yeah, there were guidelines laid out at the very beginning, and I would say that, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of people in the audience maintained the, what had been laid out for them.
Okay.
So.
Okay, Martha, did you want to add anything to that?
No, no, I think Leslie covered it, and I'm just realizing we skipped over one agenda item, but we can come back to it after the...
Okay, after the reports?
After the reports.
My goodness, I must have been so anxious to get through it. Anything else from Board of Selectmen?
No.
Nope, that's good, okay, Concon has not met, ZBA.
Martha already mentioned the forty B applications in Rear Pearson Drive, so it's really all of them.
Okay, cool, MBPC.
Let's see, MBPC met last month and basically reviewed, reviewed the budgets. What they, what they do is they'll set a budget in the beginning of the year and then partway through will review that budget and revise it based on new contracts that they have. And so they, they went through that process, set the preliminary budget or set a budget for FY twenty-one and also voted on the assessments that will be levied for each town. And the assessments are based on population. Our census populat, or population from the twenty-ten census is six thousand six hundred and sixty-six people, and so it's based on that, and the commission voted on a two-point-four-nine percent increase, so that's basically consistent with, you know, Prop two and a half, that's, that's what they usually track with. They did, during the Great Recession, they didn't raise our assessments at all for three years, but since then, they've been doing two, two-point-five or two-point-four-nine percent. So our assessment is going up by sixty-three dollars, I think, and it's well worth every penny.
Well, I'm glad they didn't go to Wikipedia, which says we have seven thousand and something.
Well, Wikipedia is not correct.
No, I'm glad they didn't go with Wikipedia, okay. Anything else from MBPC?
Teresa Park, you know, was recommended by the search committee, I think I mentioned this before. She was the, actually, the Planning and Economic Development Director for, for Lawrence and was on, on the commission, stepped down from it, and she started two weeks ago.
Great.
So they'll be holding their quarterly planners' meeting on the eighteenth and then the commissioners' meeting on the nineteenth.
I just wanted to bring back to the table the twenty-first of March, that workshop that's going to be taking place. Twenty-first of March, yes.
No, twenty-third, I think.
No, 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 the twenty-first is going to be...
Oh, the CPTC, right, right.
Meeting, I will be sending you information for that, I don't know if anybody else is interested, is interested in going to that. It's a whole day seminar, which one is it, so?
It's the one at Holy Cross, I think you've already...
Sorry.
The one at Holy Cross, I think you've registered already.
Oh, yeah, I already registered.
Good, we'll drive together. I don't know if anybody else wants to take a look at that, it's really a great seminar.
Yeah, it looks good.
Good one.
I was just wondering about the coronavirus. Some colleges are...
Yeah, I haven't heard anything so far, I assume that if, if, if they do decide to postpone, that we'll be notified in plenty of time, but, yeah.
I was just curious, you know.
Yeah, no, I know.
Signed up long before that all hit, but...
Yeah, I figure I'm, I haven't signed up yet, I still will, in the hope that it goes forward and things are under control, but, you know, we'll see.
Okay.
Did we skip over the one oh five High Road?
Yeah, so we skipped over, yes, we skipped over one oh five High Road. So as you'll recall, this was the preliminary plan that was submitted by Steve Sawyer on the nineteenth of February. It was a two, you know, basically a two-lot subdivision, its purpose really is just to freeze the zoning, so that... And it was, it was filed before the public notice of our zoning amendments was posted, so it did freeze the zoning that's currently in place for that. That said, the board does need to take some, take action on it. So I have for you all tonight copies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what I would suggest is we need to, the board needs to take action on this forty-five days from when it was submitted, so I would say April first to meet that deadline, so what I'd like to suggest is that everybody review this and be prepared to discuss it at the meeting on the eighteenth. And then if further discussion is needed, we can, can, you know, carry that over onto April first.
So we'll review this for our next meeting?
For the next meeting, right.
Okay.
So we got a busy night the eighteenth.
Yeah, we're going to have some...
We've got the zoning, public hearings, self-storage and this.
Right, right. And I do have one comment from Doug, which should have been included in your packets. And this was really to address the comments that were in Steve's notes about the surface water and groundwater quality. As part of the environmental report, the applicant is required to state how, you know, what kind of impact this will have on surface water and groundwater, and in both cases, the statement was that it will improve the surface water quality and groundwater quality. And Doug was questioning that, because right now it's an existing condition where it's not being impacted at all. So obviously, the roadway and any development would probably not have, not improve it.
Sound counterintuitive to me.
Right, so that was, that was his comment.
All right.
What are the practical implications of the preliminary plan here? I know it freezes zoning, but denial or an approval doesn't lock anyone into any future action, I don't believe, does it?
No, it doesn't, it's not something that gets recorded at the registry. Sometimes, like the sixty-eight Green Street one that we had, is based on an intention for an actual subdivision, and so it can often be used to help flush out any issues before applicant goes to the great expense of doing a full-blown subdivision plan. So a preliminary plan is supposed to be followed within seven months by a definitive plan. When it's done really effectively to freeze zoning, I, I think it's unlikely that we'll get a two-lot definitive subdivision plan for that property, but...
But I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't limit any future action, only the other, I don't think it does.
No, no.
Okay.
All right, is there anything else that we need to discuss this evening? Anyone else have any questions or concerns?
Just to confirm, the Gulf Center has asked for continuance?
Yes. Right, so we...
Is there a reason for that, or?
I think that they're just working on their, on their, on their project and just trying to get things to where they need to be before they come before us again. I think they're just striving to achieve, achieve their, their goals.
Indeed.
That'll be on the fourteenth, that'll be on the fourteenth, right, at seven fifteen. So we'll put together a list of all of these public hearings and send it out to you all.
That would be wonderful.
I wrote them down, they're adding up in the little books.
I want you to get that right on the line.
Okay, I'll tell you that right now.
I'm never going to be able to read this tomorrow.
I wrote them down, but... That's would be nice.
So it's...
Thank you for everything worth it, really.
Yeah, it's, it's evident that our, that our plate is getting pulled and tore, and the applications seem to be coming at a furious rate right now.
They have been coming fast and furious and, you know, the developers have been indicating that it's, you know, time sensitive, so they really want to try to get them in and, you know.
With that said, I think we also have to encourage you to, to allow for self-regulation so that we can handle what we need to handle in an appropriate manner, right? And, you know, if it says at some point you have to say, hey, timeout, we can't really process this, and you have to understand where we're at, I think that's something to encourage.
Some things, I'm not sure how much latitude there is in saying, no, you can't submit it.
It's more of a conversation. It can be submitted, I think, it can be very difficult just to process it and...
Well, it's, it's, and we talked about this at our workshop, I think, last time. Martha had made the point that Newbury is unusual and that it requires a lot of these things to actually be submitted at a planning board hearing, and that makes it very difficult to put any sort of an artificial deadline, you know, or related to the type of submission. I think, I don't see any reason, though, why, just as a matter of compliance with the open meeting law and orderly process, that I don't see any reason why we couldn't have something similar to what the Selectmen have, saying that if you want to get on the agenda for a regular meeting, then you have a week or whatever to submit it, you know, like four PM on the, on the preceding Wednesday or something like that.
Right, right.
I mean, that's, that's something that, you know, I mean, it's not related to the type of filing, it's simply a deadline to comply with the open meeting law, among other things, and to provide an, an opportunity for proper review of these things before they come before the board.
Right.
Simple one paragraph policy like the Selectmen have up, I think would do it. I'm not saying we need to make a decision on that tonight.
That's a great idea, though.
It's not on the agenda, but it's...
We did talk about it.
Yeah, we did talk about it.
Right, and that's what we've tried to do, but without having it actually codified, it makes it hard to get...
It's very difficult, I mean, you've got, didn't you get one of these filings Monday morning?
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah, fortunately, that's the one that was withdrawn, or, yeah.
But the point is that we have to protect Martha from being too nice.
Is there, is there any reason why we couldn't do it? I mean, is there any reason why you can't impose that kind of a discipline on it?
I don't think so, I mean, Martha and I had a, had a private, well, not private, but, you know, a non-agenda, a non, you know, one-on-one conversation. And were you going to talk to town council about that?
Uh, yeah, so...
I mean...
I can talk to her about it on Monday.
Yeah, and maybe get it on the agenda, in a future agenda for some brief discussion.
I think that makes good sense.
Yeah, well, it, it takes, as I said to Martha, what I was trying to say, there was no quorum present, so we could talk to her, that it's really to, to give her some breathing room, okay? And, and so whatever she's comfortable with, I think, you know, so you're not running around, you know...
I would, I would think it was, it would be nice if Martha had some sort of a deadline, so that she, instead of getting something on Monday, you got...
Exactly.
It had to have been on Wednesday, or it's next, on the next one, so that there is time for review and time for you to make sure everything's right.
Right.
I mean, we have nine, nine on our calendar, nine events.
No, I know, I know, and it's, it's, it's a lot, you know, and it's tough on, on you guys as well. Some, you know, some developers are, are very cooperative and...
And some will take advantage if they can.
Yeah.
So, and, and to avoid the situations where it puts undue burden and stress on, on our system, I think it's appropriate to have a policy.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's always, I, in my opinion, that ultimately, the agenda is set and meetings are called by the chair, so there's always inherent authority in the chair to make an exception, if it's truly necessary, you know, if it's an emergency.
True to emergency, true.
And, and that's permitted under the open meeting law.
Right.
So...
I know, and also the volume's going to do nothing but increase.
That's right.
So the demands on Martha and the boards are going to increase as the town grows and, you know, in a good way, but we've got to put some constraints on it.
Yeah.
I think Martha got the, the feel of support.
Thank you. And the one, I suppose, maybe the one benefit of doing it the way we do it, of having them submitted at the meeting, is that there is some control on the board's part of setting the public hearing dates, as opposed to the way Newbury Port does it, which says if you get it in by this date, then you'll, you know, the hearing will open on this date.
No, I, I, I mean, it's, it's largely working, and I wouldn't fix it if it ain't broke, you know.
But I think there is an issue.
Yeah, just to give you an opportunity, give you some breathing room. I would suggest like four PM on the Wednesday prior to our regular meeting, that gives you two full business days to see if something...
Yeah, actually, I might say noon time on, on Wednesday.
I'd like that, no, that's fine, you know, something on that, that order, which is, I think, consistent with the Selectmen. And again, you're not identifying the type of filing, you're just saying if you want to get on the agenda, get your stuff in by...
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll talk to council on Monday and see if there's any issue.
One more thing on the plate, but, but, yeah, I mean, it was simple, a simple one paragraph statement would all it would take, you know.
Yeah.
Doesn't have to be anything fancy.
All right, anything else from anyone?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, concerns? All right.
Nope, I'm good.
Oh, sir?
May I ask you?
Yes.
Yeah, I did have a question.
Come on up. Identify yourself. Identify yourself and-
Of course. Hi, Board.
Arthur Costonas, 105 High Road. Hi, everybody. With regard to submission, there was a statement made a short while ago about posting relative to 105, the preliminary plan. It's okay, I heard that also, but when we reference posting, what, what does that mean? I didn't understand that.
So that's when, if, if there are any zoning changes that are, are being proposed, it's, they essentially don't exactly go into effect because they haven't been adopted, but the first, the public, the post, the date that the first notification of the public hearing is posted is kind of the-
Is considered the freeze date?
Is, is, any, yes. You can probably, I'm sorry, I'm not explaining it very well right now, but-
If the zoning bylaw is, changes approved, and it, there's a number of steps. The approval is retroactive back to the first date of posting of the public meeting. So as long as, in the public hearing- So as long as, in your case, a preliminary plan was submitted before that date, you should enjoy the protection of the existing zoning.
Correct. Yeah, I thought that's what it meant, I was.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, 'cause it's, it's, it's a, it's an odd, so it's retroactive to the post?
Correct. Unlike regular town bylaws that are only effective once the AG approves them and they get posted by the town clerk.
Yeah, there seems to be some confusion out in the world about what that date is.
If you, if you read the statutes, they're confusing, so, but that, but that's what, that's what the AG tells us is the correct rule.
Right, right.
And I'm a little confused also. Does, we, we will be submitting a ten-lot yield plan in addition to an eleven-lot OSRD plan at the next meeting, and we'll certainly give enough time with respect to what we were just talking about, make sure of that. And as I understand it, I believe that can run concurrently with this submission. Would you agree with that?
So when you say a ten-lot yield plan, are you talking about a definitive subdivision plan? Are you actually looking at ten lots, or are you looking at ten units?
Not ten, ten units.
Okay.
Did I say ten?
Yeah, you said ten lots.
I apologize, ten units.
So it's the five, five lots, five two-family lots?
Yes, please.
Right.
Exactly. I stand corrected. Exactly.
I mean, typically, if you're presenting the OSRD, typically the way it's done, they can run concurrently, but typically the way it's done is that the OSRD would be submitted first, with the, the yield plan sort of proving that you have ten units.
Okay.
But the OSRD plan would, would be the one that would be submitted first through the special permit process.
Okay.
But, so you're looking-
They'll not be submitted together?
So, but, and, so sometimes what people will do is they will submit the, the special permit OSRD, but concurrently run a definitive plan which matches the OSRD. So in this case, you're saying that you wanna run a definitive subdivision plan conventional at the same time as doing, submitting an OSRD special permit.
I guess what I'm saying directly, if I may speak directly, is we would like to get some guidance on what the board would like. In the absence of an OSRD, we would like to go forward with the ten-yield plan. And we'd choose to do that directly as, at the next meeting.
You mean not go, not do the OSRD?
Unless it's available to us, which is not our decision, if you will.
Well, it is, I mean, it is available. So when you say submit, are you looking to submit informally, are you looking to, to get some guidance, or are you looking to actually submit two separate applications formally?
At, at the very least, at the next meeting, we would like to submit the ten-unit plan.
As a yield plan for the OSRD or as a separate subdivision?
That would be dependent on the board's guidance. And I, I don't know how, it's like the chicken before the egg.
So Martha, I don't think that we really give guidance.
Well, I mean, in, in this case, I mean, the board already basically said that the yield plan that was presented previously was okay to set the number of units for the OSRD.
We did.
So-
That was my understanding also.
Right, right.
I guess what the developer's asking for in this case, my developer, is which does the board prefer? The, I guess, and asking for guidance, I guess.
We haven't, the board hasn't seen a revised OSRD based on that ten-lot yield plan.
Gotcha.
So it's, I think it would be impossible for the board to say-
Should I go back to your suggestion of presenting the OSRD for review and comment?
Your OSRD is gonna include a yield plan, okay, but probably not in the same detail as you would if you would, if you were submitting a definitive subdivision plan.
Correct, exactly.
But I assume that it's going to, would look similar. So let's assume your OSRD is approved, okay? Correct me if I'm wrong, Martha. You would then submit a definitive subdivision plan incorporating the approved OSRD, so you'd get your bonus lots or whatever out of it.
I see.
Okay, that's what I, I think is what you're asking, I'm not sure. Or if you want to, at the same time, if, 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 at the same time, what you're suggesting is you want to submit a definitive subdivision plan assuming you don't get the OSRD-
Exactly.
And have that run together, I guess you could, but you, you, you might be incurring, you know, incurring an awful lot of engineering costs or whatever for no reason.
Expensive way to go to, to do two complete-
We just prepared a two subdivision just, just for-
I mean, it's up to you.
Freezing sakes, if you will, but-
Yes.
And I'm not even, yeah, it's, it is, it, it, it's difficult, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've never seen it done that way, that somebody submits an OSRD application for that plan and a definitive plan application for what would effectively be the yield plan for something else.
So here's the OSRD, if you don't like that, here's our subdivision plan.
Effectively, yes.
I guess.
You know, you're incurring, you're incurring not only all the engineering, complete engineering, including stormwater and everything for both of those plans.
Yeah.
But the cost of the, you know, the public hearing notices and all of that kind of stuff.
Very, very pricey.
Yeah, it could be very pricey, it's, I've, I've never, never seen it done that way. Usually, and I've never even seen it done where the, the subdivision plan for the OSRD runs concurrently because of fair changes, that can be very expensive as well, because if you've done a complete plan with all the required engineering and everything for something that might change.
Let me reverse engineer this. If you were standing in my position, wondering what does the board want? Would they prefer the ten-unit plan for 105 High Road, which we believe is by right, and we would go forward as, on the eighteenth, before the eighteenth, absolutely without hesitation with that plan?
And, and just forget the OSRD?
Absolutely. However, if there's an, any benefit to, to us and/or the community through an OSRD of eleven lots, single-family, how do we recognize that sooner rather than later to not make that decision? How do I, what vehicle do I use to do that? How do I do that?
I don't know if we're in the, in the position to answer that question for you.
But who does then?
Well, this is, I mean, when, when you decide that you-
You're the board.
No, no, well, we don't tell you what to do.
No, but you can certainly, the whole purpose of OSRD is to come to you and ask if that is something you would be interested in.
The whole purpose is to preserve open space.
Correct.
And, and, and that's a good thing, and it's encouraged under our bylaw. But if you're asking us, are we gonna approve it, or should you just go ahead with the as-of-right subdivision, I don't have the answer to that.
We don't, we don't have the-
I mean, I'll tell you that the plan we saw before I didn't like, you know, well, that was the yield plan.
Well, originally, yeah.
Yeah, there's been so many, I know.
Yeah. And, and frankly, there was a density issue, I thought, with the OSRD, but-
So I think what I'm gonna, yeah, what I think I'm gonna suggest is, we really aren't, we don't have this as an agenda item, we don't have any materials before us, we don't have, we're talking conceptual here, and I don't want to give you misinformation.
No, but in all fairness, we've, this has been up, this is the seventh month now.
You, you need to rely on your professionals in, for that judgment. You really do.
We are.
You have engineers.
I am.
Okay, what are they telling you?
Submit.
Come and see the board and see what we want.
Kind of, yeah. Exactly.
Well, I, I mean, I'll tell you, our, our bylaws favor the OSRD, okay? You got a problem lot there, though, with that odd jag and everything, and then you've got the issue, which was a big issue, if I recall, would be the waiver of the contiguous upland. I, I know your people don't agree that it's a waiver, but we have the opinion of council that that would be required, at least based on what we saw before. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yes. We haven't, we haven't seen any new configurations, you know, maybe, maybe there, there's a possibility of-
So I think I'm gonna help this discussion right now. If you have something that you want to submit to Martha, feel free to submit it to Martha, then we can look at it and we can talk about it. But to conceptually try to direct you as to what's going to work, what's not going to work, I don't think it's fair to ask this board, because there's, there's nothing before us.
Right, it's impossible to do in the abstract, really.
So, you know, and I can understand that you're trying to, to go through this decision process, and that's what you need to do. And then when you, when you have an idea of what you want to do, then you submit it and we'll say, this makes sense, this doesn't make sense, I can't-
Have I not been, have we not been submitting? I don't understand that comment.
So honestly, we've seen a lot of different proposals for this particular project. And at this point in time, there isn't anything for, for the board to act on. And so I don't wanna give you guidance in a direction that might not be appropriate. So we can, you can continue to ask the same question, a couple different ways.
Well, you're giving me the same answer, which is I don't wanna give you any guidance.
And I'm giving you the same answer, so that's why I'm saying maybe this, this discussion-
Is moot?
No, it's not moot.
And it's my choice, I get it, I'll hear, I heard that.
No, it is not moot, it's just that I don't know if it's gonna, if it's gonna be productive to continue it.
And I think part of the issue, if I may, is, is the board saw a five-lot, ten-unit yield plan that was more, much more reasonable than the ones that had come before the board previously and-
Agreed.
Indicated that they were comfortable with that.
Agreed.
But no new schematic OSRD plan has been presented to anybody.
Fair enough.
I've, I've seen something, but the board has not, it has not been, it was not released to me to give to the board, so.
That's what you're speaking to?
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I stand, I stand out, I stand corrected.
Yeah, I'm just trying to-
That has not happened, so.
Right, right.
Theoretically should be the next step, I apologize.
Right.
Okay, I got it, I was just trying to get some guidance, that's all.
I understand your confusion better now, there's more information out there than we've been privy to.
Right, right, and, you know, that was shown to me, you know, somewhat in, in confidence at, at the time, so, you know, if it's something that developer would now like to bring before the board for discussion, that would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate you.
All right. Anything else from anyone? You can, sir, come on up.
There was some talk tonight about-
Hi, Tony.
Tony Matthews, Main Street.
Thank you.
Some talk tonight about the town's first right of refusal for a piece of property, and I know we came across this opportunity recently down on Cottage Road. But it sounded like this is in a subdivision, like there's a house lots around it. So what I'm wondering is how is it designated as a protected piece of land if it's a house lot? Tax-wise, I'm saying.
It's in, it's in chapter sixty-one B right now, so-
But it's a house lot?
It was designated as a house lot, but that doesn't, you know, it's vacant, there's no, there are no structures on it right now, so the, what is it, four-point-seven-two acres is, has been part of a larger area on that property that's in sixty, in chapter sixty-one B, so.
How long is it, was it, how long ago was it divided into a subdivision for house lots?
Oh, God.
If it was a protected sixty-one B?
I wanna say the subdivision was probably done around two thousand and five, two thousand and six.
Approved, though?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't recall the date.
Yeah, what, what they must have done is, in fact, the sixty-one B designation actually could have even occurred after the subdivision.
And, and it did, I mean, that's, so, I mean, that, that's something that the, the property owner applies for every year, is a sixty-one A or sixty-one B designation.
So what they probably did, Tony, is they probably did the subdivision, then had some backland that they could designate as sixty-one B, so they save them, you know, taxes on it, but now they wanna turn that, want that into a house lot, would be my guess. I mean, I'm just making some assumptions on, on the history of the thing, but it seems reasonable.
And I apologize, I printed out the, the original OSR, well, the revised OSRD special permit.
And I told Martha, just leave it, because we had so much going on.
It's sitting down in the printer.
I wouldn't let her go downstairs, actually, so that's on me. I did, I said, stop, don't go anywhere.
So, so that, the OSRD special permit basically lays out the fact that eighty-six acres of this property was kept in open space and that there were certainly, certain lots that were designated as building lots, and that was all part of the approval. But as vacant land, there was nothing that would keep the owners from then putting it in chapter sixty-one B, it's-
As part of it.
As woodland.
Because it was all contiguous.
As part of it, it hasn't been improved up until this point. So now it was originally intended as a house lot, and so now it's being sold as a house lot, it's just been in sixty-one B for-
Unless the town buys it to use for municipal purposes.
Unless we feel that is, there's-
Doesn't seem to be any access to it, though.
Yes, it's, it's on a private road, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on a private road, it's, it's in a residential subdivision.
It's a step that we have to go through when something comes out of sixty-one A or sixty-one B.
Right.
There's a certain series of steps that we have to do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna-
Mandated under town, I mean, under state law.
Just standard procedure, the selectmen ask us for input, but I can't imagine-
It sounds kind of, I don't know, just, it's, there's a subdivision with house lots, but it's been protected under sixty-one B.
Yeah, well, basically-
A tax break on it.
But it hasn't been developed, it was never developed.
Right, so it's an undeveloped house lot, basically.
It's-
Essentially.
It hasn't even been cleared or anything?
No.
Just, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else or anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Any discussion on that motion?
What he can do, it is-
Oh, I apologize.
Sorry.
You were looking for it.
Oh, boy.
What did she say?
Would you like to do a motion to adjourn?
You just slapped him down.
I know, I didn't mean to.
Just teasing, but you're-
Oh, it's all right.